I'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Are there any changes to the agenda tonight, council? Not. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the July 12th, 2021 council meeting. Approval of July 14th, 2021 special payroll in the amount of $9,489.89. Approval of July 23rd, 2021 payroll in the amount of $134,778.83. Approval of USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of $12,975. Approval of USDA wastewater treatment plant debt in the amount of $77,295. Resolution authorizing funds transfers. Acceptance of the library board minutes. Approval of liquor license for some wines and mad header billiards. Approval of total claims in the amount of $329,753.4. And there were no claims over $75,000. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second by Gandy. Second by Anderson.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not? Please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on to public forum and appearances. We have Deanna Juleson here tonight regarding the farmer's market. And go ahead, Deanna.
I came to report back on the results of our customer poll for the location of the farmer's market. I'd been here maybe like six weeks ago or something talking about possibly moving the market regularly to Grimes Street, not just when it rains. And so we just, you know, can, over the last six weeks have had informal discussions with people. And we actually had a vote by, we had two jars of beans. One was to keep the market as it is in the park when it's dry and in the street when it's wet. Or to keep it, the other option was to move it permanently to the street. And the majority of people were in favor of keeping the setup as it is now. We're using the park when it's dry and the street when it's wet. So I'm just calling, coming back to report that. And that's all I have to say.
Great. So I guess there won't be any changes?
No changes.
And?
But I was really, I was concerned because I started after you had commented about the traffic. Think that it, now that it's, Grimes Street is pretty wild on Saturday mornings. I was, I just now thought, well, maybe we could have some little signs made up that we just ask people to exercise caution when backing out or something like that that might help with safety of that situation. So we can, we can move, I mean, we can just print something up and stick them in the ground on the market days to just, as a reminder to people.
Yeah. Yeah, great. Well, when I was there a couple of weeks ago, it was very lively and it was great fun. And we hope that continues.
Yeah. It's, it's really, it's pretty, we're getting good feedback. So.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is David Scharf regarding Carpenter Street paving. Go ahead, David.
So West Carpenter Avenue is being repaved and looks very nice. It's paved up to the National Guard driveway. And then it stops and our house, 601 West Carpenter is right at the end. And we'd like to request that that last 100 feet, 150 feet be paved.
I just want to say that I called the city engineer because I was surprised why they stopped there. It's not just us. There's somebody across the street. We have two houses. And she said that I should call the assessor because there might be some, some less taxes that we are paying. And I called the assessor and he looked back into a long, he said, nothing like this exists. And they just take into consideration the houses, not the street at all. And he told me to call the treasurer. I called the treasurer and nothing like that that they are knowing about. And so I, she told me also to talk to the council because we don't know what the reason that we don't get pavement when we are paying taxes like everybody else. And during the, when there's rain, there's always mud and pedals and, you know, it's like, and now especially when everybody was parking there because, you know, they couldn't park where the pavement, the road was done. It's all like a big mess. So.
So there's two homes back there, one on each side of the street and that's it?
Yeah. And there are the garages to the, those condos back there too.
Yeah, but that, that's not, their story is a different story.
Yeah. The garages are on the west, but right at the end of the street, correct?
Right.
They go with the, whatever street that is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Gotcha. Yeah. Melanie, do you have anything to add to that really? Why, why did it stop there? Does anybody?
Past history for the city, that street before construction was, it was a seal coat road. So it was, it was a, it wasn't concrete. It wasn't blacktop, but it was a solid road. However, with the construction that's been tore up and past history over the years, if we tear out a street and put in concrete, everything's been, see, the, the street gets assessed back to the homeowners, just like a lot of other places in town that have happened over the history. So if we were to continue concrete for the last 100 feet or so, then that would be assessed back to the homeowners. And with a seal coat road at that point, with the amount of traffic there in the future, I'm not, your cost benefit is going to be, while it's nicer, a seal coat road will hold up quite well with the amount of traffic there. But what Melanie was talking about is when you put a concrete street in front of a house, that does affect your value of, it increases the value of your home.
Yeah, you pay the same taxes as everybody else.
Well, everybody else does too, but when they've had a concrete street put in front of their house, they've paid an assessment. That's common all over the state. When they put in a new street like that, it's assessed back to the homeowner for portions of the street.
You will be assessed more tax for the concrete once it's put in place.
Well, the cost of the construction. The city. The city would assess some cost back to you if you want us to do that for the cost of the street.
But are you saying all the other homeowners were already assessed a long time ago when it was?
At some point in time, when that construction was built, the homeowners at the time were
Were assessed.
Assessed the value of, or up to probably, I think it's 25% of the total cost of the construction is what happens on an assessed project.
Okay. So that happened some years ago?
Right.
When it was originally paved and?
Now, seal coat, now, seal coat road, we don't charge anybody for that because it's actually pretty simple for maintenance and stuff. So it's.
Is that, is that clear?
How much would it be more? Can you tell us?
I don't know. I didn't have Melanie do the numbers on that, on what that concrete would cost. It's not part of the construction project we have right now. So it would be essentially impossible for us to just keep them there to do that extra. That would be becoming a complete another project that we would have to do and engineer and get ready to do another project like that.
Seal coat is, that's chip and seal?
Yeah.
And how much would it cost to do that?
We're gonna do that.
You're going to do the chip and seal at the end?
How long does it last? Because chip and seal sometimes?
Well, depends on how much traffic is on it. If chip and seal in, when you're talking two houses and a couple other cars going to a
Parking, yes.
A parking, you're talking, that, that'll last 10, 15, 20 years with some regular maintenance.
And are you doing regular maintenance there?
Uh, right now, I don't know. I, I would assume that we're doing some regular maintenance because I know we're gonna come back and do a chip and seal road there now.
Let's hear, Melanie's got a comment too.
So right now, that section of the road is in very bad shape. With that being a dead end road without alleys really, the contractor, as well as some of the neighborhood, used that area. So there's definitely repairs that need to be made to that chip and seal. And as far as the price of assessment, I'd be more than happy to give them an estimate for that. The residents on the unpaved portion of Merrill asked for the same thing. Right now, they're not as interested as they were before I gave them the price. But I would be happy to do that for them. They, they just wanted to talk to you guys about not having it assessed.
How long does that assessment last?
Oh, John, I think it can vary, but is it?
Usually 10 years or something. Okay. Thank you.
So yeah, we would like to have the assessment just to, just to know. Just to know. But if it's something that is not, that is a lot of money and also can you do the chip and seal right away? Or is it doing?
Well, when the construction gets over, we'll get.
It's almost free.
Chip and seal this year?
Chip and seal this year. So we couldn't put in anything, couldn't put down a hard surface yet or before winter because we wouldn't have anyone coming in.
Chip and seals are still here in town?
Hey, there, excuse me, Daryl, can you come to the microphone?
They're done with their portion, what they were doing for the city, but they're doing some private stuff now. So they're at the yard. I mean, if we want, we'd have to make a change quick to do it now. And there's still people parked on it. It wouldn't take them long to do a chip and seal on it, seal coat we call it. But that would have to be, I could tell them tomorrow or something like that, maybe they could still work it into what they had. But we'd have to.
Yeah. And the only, I'll say, concern with doing it right now is there is still some work remaining on Carpenter. So it, I mean, it could get torn up, but you know, if we don't do it tomorrow, then we know we won't have a good surface going into winter. I mean, we'll still have a gravel surface. It'll be a good surface. We'll get the potholes filled in, but it won't be the chip and seal.
Okay. Well, it sounds like they would like the assessment, Melanie, if you would figure that out.
Cost for the assessment.
The cost for the assessment.
Yeah, we should go ahead with the chip and seal, I think.
Otherwise we'll stay in the winter with this.
Well, look at the cost for square foot tomorrow.
I think we need to look at that too.
Yeah.
If, if we can get it in and when we can get it in compared to the construction right now.
Yeah.
Because the gravel is very big and it's not even what it was before.
Right. Yeah.
They put it because it was raining and they threw it in and it just.
Yep. Yeah, there's definitely repairs that need to be made. You know, also to the alleys by those condos, there's repairs to be made to those. The cleanup work on Merrill and Carpenter still needs to be done and we know that. If you would leave me an email address that I can send that to you, I'd be happy to.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, David. I appreciate it. We'll get you that information. Okay. So let's move down to resolution, action items and ordinances. The first resolution is consideration to accept a proposal to purchase $3 million general obligation capital notes, loan notes, a series 2021. You gonna talk about that?
Yep. We, we, for the refinance and for the bonding that we're planning on doing this, this year for street improvements along with refinancing, we, we received bids from six different local, or three, three or four local Iowa banks, along with Zion's Bank, who we've done business before. And then another one, Key Government Finance is out of Denver, Colorado. The interest rate for, that, and Zion's Bank gave us the lowest interest rate of 1.3% interest. To note, the two, two loans that were refinancing, one was at a little over 3% and the other was over 2%. So we're saving 1%, interest on one of them and over 2% on the other bonds that were refinancing. So this will, it's gonna say, it looks like it's gonna save us somewhere around $112,000, or actually almost $113,000 in interest over the life of these two, of these two bonds. And so our request is to accept Zion Bank's proposal and move forward with that bond issue.
I'll make a motion to accept Zion's.
I'll second it.
Okay. Moved by Toohill, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not? Please call the roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you. Approved unanimously. And then, of course, we have the next two resolutions that have to do with the notes that are gonna be refinanced. So the first resolution, to authorize the redemption of outstanding general obligation capital notes, 2018. So that one, was this, this one was for the paving of the streets of Court Street and Tyler?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and that note was at 3.5%. So I would accept a motion to, to take care of that one.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Toohill? Any other discussion? Questions? Not? Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie? Thank you. Approved unanimously.
And then the last resolution, again, is the redemption of the outstanding general obligation capital notes, series 2019. And this was for the library boiler, the airport project and the downtown lighting, which was at 2.28%. And again, we're going to 1.3% so.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other questions, comments? None? Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yep.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. Approved unanimously. Under the mayor's report, I have a few things here. The first one is the Fairfield Iowa Farmers Market Week. This is a proclamation for August 1st through the 7th. Whereas Fairfield Iowa farmers provide citizens with access to healthy, locally and regionally produced foods through farmer's markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate demand for a diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas farmer's markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the US economy. And whereas farmer's markets serve as significant outlets by which small to medium, new and beginning and veteran agricultural products, producers market agriculture products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas the city of Fairfield, Iowa, recognize the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers, generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages and more. Now therefore, to further awareness of farmer's markets contributions to Fairfield, Iowa, I, Connie Boyer, mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of August 1 through 7, 2021, as Fairfield Iowa Farmers Market Week. In conjunction with the observance of National Farmers Market Week, I call upon Fairfield citizens to celebrate farmer's markets with appropriate observance and activities. In witness thereof, I have unto set my hand this 26th day of July, 2021, 243rd year of the independence of the United States of America. So Deanna brought this forth and we appreciate it. And again, you know, our farmer's market for our community, I think, is pretty successful. And I think it's a great thing when people can connect with where their food is grown. And I hope the next time I go there, I can get some sweet corn. Last time was all sold out.
Come early.
Yeah. So anybody like to comment on that? All right. So the next thing I'd like to mention is reinstating the volunteer center. In your packet, we have some bylaws. We have two forms for liability waivers. Just to let you know, those liability waivers are what's used for Habitat for Humanity. There's one for minors that parents have to sign off on. And there's, you know, one for adults. It's my understanding Mike Brown wrote those some years ago. And, and John, did you have any comments about any of the?
They're still good right now.
Yeah. Yeah. And bylaws, any comments about those or anything to?
Not really.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So we, I've been working with finding those five wonderful people and one which is here tonight. So let me just tell you who has volunteered to be part of this board. Jan Larson is here tonight with her husband, David. And Jan has been our community for, I'm not sure how many years, but she's certainly been involved and helps on the Habitat Board and is her own business owner here in town. Shanaus Kreider has, also wants to participate. Again, she runs the Habitat Restore, very involved in Habitat here in Fairfield and Mount Pleasant. Tony Webb, longtime Fairfield resident, retired from Jefferson County Health Center. And he is also a board member at Masden Barnes. Cole Fishback, he's one of the owners at Cider House. And Jeff Wilson, retired from the Fairfield Ledger. He was the publisher there. And we're really excited. We just got Jeff last week. And we're really excited about this group and they've already put together great ideas, just formulating this. We've talked to the library and it will be similar to what it was before, that we have the resource desk to work out of. We're getting a phone line installed by Lisco. We've got our first donation in, $500 from Iowa State Bank. And so we've been working on it. Now we need official approval from you guys so that we don't have to give our $500 back and we can get up and, and running. And really, this is a place for, to bring volunteers together to projects. And when we have organizations that have projects, to find them volunteers. And, you know, we're excited to get going. And so with your support, we, we'd like to say go. That's great.
I just saw these. So I've been out this whole weekend at a reunion. So I just read these bylaws tonight. Under the duties and powers, there's a lot of references to implementing the mayor's goals and directives. And then later it talks about the mayor and council. I think just to respect our form of government, any mention of mayor should always have mayor and council as a, as a group. Because that's, that's how we make decisions. So I would just ask that those
Okay. Yeah, we can keep that.
That always be put in as, you know, mayor and council language throughout the bylaws. I think that's how all other bylaws are. But as long as John Morsy signs off on the liability, because that was the issue we kept bumping up against with our volunteer center in the past, was we could only send volunteers to groups that had liability insurance already. And so we kind of basically became, you know, assisting those organizations. But we couldn't throw our own events without spending money on liability insurance. So. Is Gary Mathiell still the city's?
Yes. And did you have an opportunity to give them those?
I did not get that sent over to Diane. I need to send it to Diane.
Yeah, I'd like them to take.
Something you might ask them is if the council were to approve and support an activity of the volunteer center, then our liability insurance might kick in. That's how the school board works.
Like the city's umbrella. Yeah.
So it's an option.
Well, yeah. If that's how it works for, say, Beautification Commission, you know, they, they invite people to come and do things. And so if somebody, say, tripped and fell while they're doing something for the Beautification Commission, then whose insurance covers it? I assume it's just. Yeah. So that would be the same for this organization, for this group. That seems simple enough.
Yeah. And I guess Rebecca, would you mind just double checking again and then report back? Just so we have a follow-up. Great. Thank you, Michael, for that change. And we will change that. And any other comments?
If you're looking for a motion to accept, I'll, I'll move to accept it. The bylaws as written with the, the one change and then ask for a review of the liability.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that.
Second.
That motion. Second by Flornoy. Any other questions or discussion? Not? Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
One thing that wasn't here, but I want to mention was we had an emergency management meeting on the 15th of July. And I had mentioned this previously, but we did talk again about the increase per capita fee or small levy to generate income for emergency management. Just to give you a rundown, our income right now for emergency management is $1 per capita that we, the city and county both pay. So that generates about $20,000 in income. There is a grant, a homeland security grant of about $25,000 that we receive on an annual basis, although that's not guaranteed that that will continue. And that's always a little bit of, you know, the issue of what if that doesn't continue? And then we get about $35,000 through 911. That comes over to emergency management for Brett to manage the 911 addresses and all this stuff that goes along with that. So that's income of about $80,000. Our expenditures are $80,097. You can see that they're matched up. And, you know, we do have about $116,000 in the bank for emergency purposes. But we obviously know going forward, our expenditures are going to start, you know, will increase. And if our income doesn't increase, we're eventually gonna have an issue. So at this time, what we have asked Brett, what the board has asked Brett to do is put together needs and costs, for him to look a little further ahead, you know, five years and, and get, get that together so we understand really what, what we're looking at for the next few years. And then we'll determine whether, you know, an increase in per capita will take care of that. For example, like, you know, changing it from a dollar to a $1.50 or to $2, which I think that comes out of our general fund, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And so, or there is, you know, a small levy. One thing that was batted around was 5 cents. And I think that generates, I want to say 40,000, 30 or 40,000, I forget which it is. But anyway, somewhere in that neighborhood. So again, I'll read reporting on that probably next quarter to come back and say, this is what emergency managing board would like to do. And, but if you also have any comments affecting our general fund and all that, please give those to me.
Do the small municipalities pay as well?
I believe so. Yes. Yes.
Those are voluntary assessments. We volunteer that money to the management board.
I, well, I guess if you want to say that. Yeah, we've done it for years.
No one has authority to levy that against us. We're just doing it voluntarily. I just want to make that clear. That we do it out of our own goodwill. Is that right, Aaron?
Well, it's our obligation with EMA to support it now.
So we do have an obligation.
Well, I, I don't know if there's a vouch, shelt rule, but I think there is an obligation for us to support EMA. I actually think, listening to Brett's woes to an extent, I think it's our obligation to figure out how to support him better. I think it's pretty feasible from our perspective that we can do that. Again, that kind of goes back to an EMA levy, which I think is, is a better option. But again, it's, again, it's another, another, another can of worms.
The dollar that we, the dollar we give them is, we decide the dollar and then we just give it to them.
Well, that's, that's kind of what's been agreed in the past.
Just like FIDO, we give them a certain amount of money.
Right. I think we should probably, I think we should agree to up it in the future.
I think that's been in place for over 20 years.
Well, yeah, if we see a budget.
Yeah, that $1 per capita.
I think that was just all wrapped up.
That, yeah.
Update.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, she's making a point that our, once we get the census final numbers, our.
Payment will go up.
Yeah, our payment will go up too. So.
Do we need to approve the appointments to the volunteer center? I know there's, I don't know if there was a motion to that. Do we need?
I'm sorry. I kind of passed over that, didn't I? Can we, can we finish this and I'll go back to that? Because yeah, Michael's motion was really about the bylaws.
Bylaws, yeah.
So I apologize. Yeah, let me just make one other point about the EMA. And that is that there was a motion and a pass to have a $75 fee to get a new 911 address to cover the, some of the costs. Brett has to, there's a company that comes out and installs the, you know, the little blue marker. And there's a cost to that. So.
The street sign?
Yeah. Yeah, that says what your number is. And there is a cost to that. So we're basically covering that cost with this new $75 fee. And I think that's a reasonable, a reasonable cost to do that. So just an FYI. So yes, let's, let's digress just a little. basically covering that cost with this new $75 fee. And I think that's a reasonable, a reasonable cost to do that, so, just an FYI. So, yes, let's digress just a little bit, and, yes, if we'll approve a motion for the appointments.
Motion to approve appointments to volunteer center?
Thank you, Paul.
Second?
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you for that detail, I kind of glossed over that. The last thing that I wanted to mention, that it's coming up on election time, and so, Ward 2, Ward 4, an at-large position, and the mayor position are all up for election this year, so, you can come and get papers from Rebecca if anyone's interested, so, just want to let the public know that those are up for election this year. So, that's all I have. John?
Yes. I'm going to get a chance to talk to you for five or 10 minutes in closed session. I promise it won't take any longer than that, all right? But, there was something I wanted to bring up that I didn't have before me at the time we had a conversation, a meeting ago, actually, the last two meetings about the public forum, people that came and told us they have a right to be heard here. And essentially, our rules of procedure for the council that we've adopted 20 years ago, basically lays out a format for where we've allowed to do that for a very long time, and we didn't really disagree with them, but I probably should have got up and disagreed more than just to tell you a few things about what you have within your discretion as council. But actually, I'd just tell you, I found my books on the League of Cities' original ordinances that your ordinances for this town are based on after Home Rule. And essentially, what the League of City ordinances, or model city ordinance for the state, had to say about this was based on the state code, but essentially, the point of the part of the model ordinance, which reads pretty much verbatim as far as what you have in your city code for the last couple of codifications, is that the city council has the right at all times to determine its own course of action. And then, there's important language in there, that no person, not a member of the council, shall be allowed to address the council except upon special permission granted by the council. So, if you have a load on your agenda, you don't necessarily have to entertain the people that want to be heard at that time. You can go ahead, discuss and deliberate, and say, "We're going to have to do this some other time, folks." You think it's important enough to have that much input from the public, you can do like the mayor did with the mask discussion, and have a separate hearing on that if you need be. But you don't have to let anybody come up here and talk to the public forum if you think you're going to be overwhelmed with something, and it needs to be otherwise part of your course of agenda down the road. So, I should have been probably more clear about that at the time, I didn't have my League of Cities books, but I knew there was something in there. And essentially, if you look at 28, or 2.28.010 of the Fairfield municipal ordinances, this that I just read to you is a large paragraph in there that talks about what you have control over, and says basically that you don't have to do it. The fact that you have rules of procedure and policies about the way you like to proceed is because you've always been an open council, you've always given people an opportunity to be heard unless you've just had an absolute load, but I've been around here long enough, I've seen times when you have a packed room, and you just can't get everything talked about that people want to talk with you about. So, you do have the last word, and you do have the discretion to set rules other than what your norm is as far as this public forum here. So, just want to make that clear to you. I didn't have my research books in hand at the time that we were having that discussion, and I'm sure there's two or three people that came here with the expectation you were going to change something, and I guess I'm just saying you didn't have to change anything. You've been doing it more leniently than what the model code says you can do for the last 20 years, so.
Thank you.
I'll leave you alone with that, okay?
Okay, we'll move on to committee and board reports. Property committee.
Property committee met this evening, and there was great discussion about a number of topics. Unfortunately, there was, there were no firm commitment made that we can bring to you at the council, for the council, but we have considerable discussion regarding the park situation. We discussed public restrooms. We expressed, we expressed the fact that we are, these are items that need to be addressed, and I think, basically, there was no consensus reached, so unfortunately, it will be an ongoing issues. We have, are waiting for some cost items that will need to get together before we can actually come back to the council and make some, you know, ask for your approval. So, that kind of was a general, is an overall view of what we did this evening.
Great, thank you, Martha. Anybody have any questions of Martha? Okay. State preserves board update, and the Lamson Woods management plan, Michael?
So, good news, last week on Monday, the State Preserve Board approved our Lamson management plan. Contingent upon, no tree removal will take place until after a fall and spring assessment. This is something the preserve board, or DNR employee John Pearson does, he does a, an assessment near the trees that we're talking about removing, both in fall and spring, to make sure there are no endangered species in that area. In order to do that, he would first need a list of trees that would be considered for removal, and so, to get the ball rolling, the Arbor Committee is meeting on Wednesday to start discussing just that. So, just a quick review, I was asked by some of the board, preserve board, to basically summarize the activities that we were requesting, and you're going to basically summarize them thusly. One is the removal of invasive species in the understory, so that's under the trees. The removal of certain large trees to allow sunlight to come down to the canopy, which is what allows the next generation of oaks to grow. And thirdly, would be planting some native species in the understory, specifically to help some of the wildlife. So, that in a nutshell was the plan, though it's in greater detail, as you've seen it before. So, what we can do right away would be mechanical removal of invasive species in the understory, which is just cutting down invasives, and then possibly controlled burn. And one of the members made the point, you would want to do that first before opening the canopy by removing certain hardwoods, because once that light hits the understory, it can actually, obviously, would encourage growth of whatever is there. So, if there are a lot of invasives, then you could get a bigger invasive problem. So, the order will really be understory management before maybe winter 2022, or 2023. So, January, February 23, you might see some hardwood removal. And again, it's done in a very strategic way, it's not, you don't want to overdo it, but it's important, it seems odd to cut a grown tree down as part of management, but it's necessary, because understory trees, non-hardwood understories can grow in a shaded environment, but the oaks cannot. So, if we want it to be an oak-kickery forest, as it has been, you have to occasionally open up the canopy in a certain way to let that next generation thrive. So, good news, and we'll probably be coming back, Arbor Committee will make a recommendation at some point, but it's, it's very good to finally have this. We've had that preserved since the late 70s, and the management plan was always a no-touch plan, so it's just been kind of going on its own since then. So, with a little bit of proper management, we'll actually see it healthier, more robust native woodland than what it would be otherwise.
Thank you. And thanks for all your work on that, and the committee's work on that, it's such a, it's such a great committee of people really volunteering, you know? It is a volunteer committee that really has a focus, and it's doing great things, so. Board of Adjustment minutes.
So, there's nothing for the council to consider. The Board of Adjustment denied the variance request for a front yard setback. I would like to encourage the council that if you see any of the Board of Adjustment members, let them know that they're doing a good job. They have had some very good discussions over the last couple meetings. They've had some hard decisions, but they are, you know, upholding the code that you, you know, support. And, you know, the last project that they turned down was a very nice-looking project, would have added to the neighborhood, but unfortunately, didn't meet the setback requirements, and the board denied that variance. So, again, they're doing a great job, they're doing what they're supposed to do, but sometimes that's not the popular decision, so there's no action for the council tonight on the Board of Adjustment.
And I guess Melanie, would you just reiterate why it's so important for, if they're doing anything, to call City Hall to see if they need a permit?
Yes, yeah. So, on, obviously, any new construction, call City Hall to talk about the different permits you need, but even if you're replacing, whether it's a deck or a fence, it's important to call City Hall, because sometimes that deck or fence wasn't in compliance the first time it was built, and it was grandfathered in. Well, even if you replace the fence board by board, it's a new fence, and then becomes out of compliance. So, sometimes there are things that we can do at a staff level to keep you from having to go to the Board of Adjustment. We can get creative, Scott talks it over with me and Don, and sometimes we bring the whole office into it to see how we can try and help the people with what they're wanting to do, but if you start construction before you talk to us, we can't, you know, we can't give you your money back or anything like that, as in this case, you know, this person had purchased the lumber, and actually had started building things, and, you know, can't even sell, or I mean, can't return the lumber because it already has screws in it. So, you know, absolutely, anytime building, I mean, it's much easier to call us and us tell you that you don't need a permit than to get a knock on your door or a call that says, "Hey, you need to talk to the Board of Adjustment because you're not in compliance," so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Move on to administrator and department reports. Want Melanie to go first?
She's at the podium, go ahead.
I was first on the list.
Okay.
So, actually, the second link on there was on our Facebook page this last week. Pretty much every street project the city is doing this fiscal year is starting in the next two weeks, so, there's going to be a lot of road closures, we'll do our best to get notice on Facebook. Adjacent property owners normally get letters, but, you know, sometimes the people that are a block away aren't aware of the project. Facebook page is really a great way to stay up to date on those projects. Projects overall in the city, step to the sanitary sewer work is getting very, very close to finished. I guess what I'd like to get out there to the public is, the next couple weeks, the contractor's going to be cleaning up and re-grading the yards and stuff, and if the contractor comes to your yard and then leaves, and you're not happy with something, now's the time to call me. You know, some people have called and asked whether the contractor was coming back, and I said, "Yes, they're coming back." Well, this is their last time coming back, so if, you know, if there are issues in the next month, that, please let City Hall know, and we can get those, you know, those concerns passed on to the contractor. The 2021 bond package, so the work on 23rd Street is going to be starting August 9. 23rd Street, the project goes from 23rd, goes from Burlington to Tyler, but it'll be closed in stages. A majority of the traffic is going to be routed to 20th. We are going to be putting up a temporary four-way stop at 20th and Jefferson, so people who travel Jefferson regularly, be aware of that. There's just going to be a lot of traffic on 20th with this project, that we want to keep everyone aware of, and keep trucks going to the industries out there in the park. In between the stages of 23rd, 9th Street and C Street will be done. When we do get to 9th Street, two of the entrances to the east parking lot of the rec center will be closed. The east parking, there is a third driveway on the very south side that will still allow that east parking to be accessible, but even, even park and rec goers are going to be affected by all the construction projects that we have going on, so just bear with us, slow down. On 4th Street, it's currently closed between Grimes and Depot for water main and sanitary sewer work. This is being done in advance of the street overlay. Once they're done with the utility reconstruction, they'll come back with concrete patching, and then we're expecting the asphalt overlay to come in at the end of September, or the first, end of August or the first part of September. 30 seconds, on a very similar timeframe, they're going to be starting concrete patching tomorrow, they were out marking the patches today. So, 30 second, we'll be narrowed down to one lane in places, if not for that whole stretch section. Judy, I appreciate you getting it out to the neighborhood during your walks, letting them know, but then again, that's going to be another major disruption to people's travel, to be aware of. And then, the post office alley is going to start August 2, so, I'm just, we're just going to inconvenience everyone for the month of August, and then hopefully, we'll be done. But, so we should be seeing that post office drop box moved the first or second week of August, when we get ready to redo that portion of the road. Thinking farther ahead, the Highway 1, the Highway 1 widening project, we are at, we have 12 of the 38 easements signed. After this next week or so, we'll have a very clear idea of which ones are going to be moving forward, and which ones we have to talk to the council more on, but things are moving very well with that. Maryland Carpenter, as we talked about earlier, that one is finishing up. There is still cleanup to be done in that area, and then there is a drainage issue on Carpenter that the contractor's going to have to come back and replace. So, still a little bit of work, but we're getting close on that one. My description, or my report, does not have any information on the Carnegie stairs, but I was told today that those are done. The sidewalk is done in front of the Carnegie building, and, but there is still hand railing that needs to be installed on the stairs, so the stairs are still closed, and there's still construction going on in that area. And finally, the fire station task force has not met since the last project update I gave you. We're working, still working with the architect on some, some concepts and some estimates and some things that are taking longer. We knew that it was going to take this long, it's not that we're behind schedule or anything, it's just we haven't had a third meeting. We did do topographic survey near the DOT buildings in order to help the architect with some of their concerns regarding the elevation and the grading at the DOT sites, so we should have answers on whether the turning radius and the elevations are going to be cause of a problem at the DOT site, or if that is feasible. So, they're working through a lot of processing, a lot of information, still on schedule to give, you know, the council recommendation here soon, but the architect is still working on some things. So, again, we're just going to get all of the projects done here in the next month, and if we all live through it, then, then we'll move on to future projects, so. Any questions? All right, thanks.
Thanks, Melanie. Go right ahead.
Okay. I have to admit, I was pretty happy to put this report together for you all with the financial state of the city. If you look at our general fund balances, and, well, let me step back, if you look at what I put together, those are all the general fund balances, or fund balances of each of those specific line items at the end of June. There's still, we haven't closed out this last fiscal year, but there are still some things that the auditors may want us to change here this next month, so we just haven't closed it out. But in general, these are pretty good numbers for us to look at. As you can see, the general fund balance has gone up over the last five years. The last year, it saw a decrease of about $30,000, actually, that's $40,000. But, if you look at the decreased revenues in the library, and rep, parking rec, and through the police department, through and through the police department through this last year because of the pandemic, you can understand why we have a little bit of a dip in revenues or cash on hand balances. The road use tax balances have been going up at a very steady, steady rate. Part of that, at this point in time, and because you see such a steep increase from 20 to, 2020 to 2021 is because we haven't started spending our 21, or road use tax dollars yet. As Melanie said, our projects are going to be starting here in the near future. Our water fund is strong also, as you can see, we're doing well with that with plans to redo some of the infrastructure within the water plant, and some of that will be paid with cash on hand rather than borrowing money. The wastewater fund balance was the, kind of the crazy one. As we all know, with the sewer plant project, that's what created that, the odd-looking graph there. Everything at this point in time with the fund balances is very, is very good, we're setting fine. The, of course, then the last one is a solid waste fund balance. As we've discussed earlier this year, we anticipate that will probably go down a little bit here in the next fiscal year, because we're using some of those funds to, to fund the sustainable sustainability coordinator. But in the end, I think you'll, you'll notice that our, I think our fund balances and our cash on hand for the, the status of our city is in very good shape. The last thing is our CD interest is awful this year. It went from 2.25% last year, last year to 0.7%, which is why you see such a large drop in interest rate off of our CDs. Our, our money market account is, interest rate is awful too. So it is what it is at this point, but we are trying to get more funds or create more funds through interest than what we can. It's just, that's what the market bears at this point in time. That is all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, seeing none. I guess the next thing is to go into closed session. So I would entertain a motion to go to closed session.
So moved?
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion approved, go to closed session.